It is June seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and I call this meeting to order at six thirty-three P. M. And we'll start with roll call. Mayor Protan Villalobos. Councilmember Bunker is absent. Councilmember Styler.
Here.
Councilmember McClab.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And I am Mayor White. If you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I moved them up in there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And also to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. And remain standing for the invocation, please. Dear gracious heavenly Father, Lord God, we are just so grateful to be here in Martindale, Texas. And Lord God, we just ask that you have your hand upon us as we make decisions and govern. And we just ask for your wisdom and your guidance in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, and I see we have a couple of public comments. Thank you. And the first one is Mary Backwater.
I've got a couple of items here. Okay, first of all, the previous police chief may do find one or two officers. And now then tonight, y'all are going to swear in three, because Martindale really need to have three extra officers. And it's just this to collect more fines. Let's see, my question.
Wait, what was the question again?
It's not a question. It's just a statement.
What was it?
The police, the former police chief had only one or two officers working when he was here. Now they're planning on swearing in three. My question is, do you really need three? And I hope you vetted them. Okay, also, my main concern tonight, because the San Marcos City Council is meeting right now. And one of their agenda items is about a thing called the Highway eighty utility project. And there originally, they had about three hundred thousand in their budget for these. Now then, they've got it up to about seventy. That's San Marcos. Okay, what they want to do is to build a lift station. That's the pump sewage, and it's right on the banks of a creek. We call it Snake Creek. San Marcos calls it Bypass Creek. It's right next to Highway eighty, and it's only twelve hundred feet from the San Marcos River. It is a major tributary, San Marcos River. And it's only, it's less than a mile upstream from where the San Marcos, Martindale city limits cross San Marcos River. So anyway, this is upstream. And they're planning on pumping at first four million gallons per day, and then it'll go up to six million gallons per day of raw sewage. And be pumped over three miles to the current San Marcos sewage treatment plant. And that is on River Road. And I've spoken to a number of my neighbors and some other landowners out there. And when the Martindale did your thing with the ETJ, most of this property, most of it, not all of it, most of it is now in the San Marcos ETJ, especially where this lift station is. Now, the rest of it's in private property. And I guarantee you, the property owners are going to be watching, because I don't really want to have four million gallons spilled on my property. Also, when the thing does, if it does overflow, what was the segment in here? They're going to have the flow will be conveyed to Bypass Creek by open channel. Y'all know what that means? They don't transfer raw sewage.
Yeah. Thanks for that information. Got to keep an eye on San Marcos.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Harper. And the next comment is by Jeff Latimer.
Okay, so I have to introduce myself? No.
Yes.
Well, I'm Jeff Latimer, I'm a citizen of Martindale. I'm not up here representing the Martindale Parks Advisory Board at this time. I tried that last week, but this is just me at the moment. So I'm walking my dog, as I've been doing often all for the past three and a half years, trying to walk her down to the river, on the Bates Park. And there's two large white vehicles parked. They're trying to hide behind the last little tree on the left there, up next to the riverbank as close as they can get. They're still up. They're not down on the river. And I said, okay, you know, I've been told not to try to enforce anything. So I called the city, and I said, do we have somebody who can come talk to these people about not parking here? And I don't know what I was told, but I think I was told, then I called the Codwell County non-emergency line. And they said, we are not here to enforce your Martindale civic ordinances. It's what the sheriff's deputy told me. I said, oh, okay. So then, we went down the river, and then Tom Hux, Hux, showed up with his orange jacket and and kind of hucked the gruff down there and started saying things about five hundred dollar fines, and can't do this. And what I didn't realize, I don't know if he realized it, that there are tire tracks from that apartment, that property just east of there, where people have been driving down there so much and crossing over that boundary, but there is double two tracks, it looks like. Couldn't believe I missed that. This has been going on for a while. Well, the next day, a lady was down there with her two kids, two ladies, two kids, I can't remember. And they said, oh, the only reason we park here is because everybody else has been parking down here. So I haven't noticed that. I've seen three cars down there. Apparently, there's enough to make two tire tracks. I think we need to put in some buttersticks to block where they're going now, or maybe some more tea posts.
This is phase one, you're calling.
No, this is the one base. I couldn't believe how brazen these people have gotten, because we've owned this before. We've owned the park up at, up at the front, you know, or down the street, or wherever the other alternatives are, but not crossing over like that. I just wasn't aware. It's not my part to be aware or enforce, but I just wanted to make that unfortunate, and I hope it's self.
I'm aware, all I can say. I'm addressing it.
And then, I don't know my sound like that, but I pick up trash at my mama, and today, the gentleman, tell me his name, he's the coordinator of enforcement.
Lee Rust.
Lee. Lee asked me to go the Dollar General. And I was like, okay, like, I didn't usually do stuff like that, but I said, okay, I'll do that this one time. And there was a lot of trash on the side of, there's the Dollar General, and there's a wooden fence, and then there's lots. And there's an empty cabin-type house there. Nobody's in for a moment, according to Gabriel, who came and told the news. But I just picked up as much trash along that train line as I could. And, oh, and the whole point is, I spoke to someone with the juvenile department in Codwell County. And she can give her van and bring three kids over here to pick up trash. I don't think it has to be just with the parks. I think they can pick up trash anywhere, because she's willing to do this once a week. Maybe in the evening. And we've got some trash picker efforts, and she says she does this with Lululemon, she does it for Buckard, and then she can do it for Martindale.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your time is up.
That was my point of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much. And so, as a council, we cannot comment.
I will say, I've addressed, I'm aware of that issue, and I'm addressing.
Okay, so now we'll move on to reports. City administrator has the code enforcement report.
Yeah, so in your packets this evening, you'll see a copy of the work that our code enforcement officer has been doing in terms of providing warnings and issuing permits, some of the items that you've worked on is vehicles that are parked in public right-of-ways for an extended amount of time and creating new uses. And then, that's, that's happened downtown and also within some of the neighborhoods around town on free issue billing permits, and we've recently made some progress on some of those substandard structures within our neighborhoods. We're going to focus our enforcement on good properties that are within the flood hazard area, since those pose a greatest risk, and then proceed out from there. Once, once those are mitigated or that's made progress, we'll proceed. So unless there's any questions on, on that report.
Yeah, I had a question about the dilapidated structures. From what I understand, it says in the ordinance that if a person has served such an ordinance that they have six months in order to remove the structure.
So there are at least two or three ways we can address substandard structures. One of them is through the building codes. One of them is through our public nuisance ordinances, dilapidated homes, as you mentioned. And the other is to have a basically a submarine judgment from a court that says, based off of findings of an engineer, that they pose a hazard to, immediate hazard to health and safety. So each of those processes have different timelines, requirements. We intend to use the most expeditious of those three options to get them mediated within the floodway, which likely starts through the court judgment process, rather than ticket notification, wait six months, come back to the municipal court, get a judgment from the municipal court. They find it, they appealed back to the court, to the district court or some other, and can drag on. Said we might just go straight to the district court. But we'll be following the advice of our engineers that we hire and of our city attorney on, on the best legal methods to go about mediating the circumstances.
Yeah, because I noticed that the one structure at Fannin in nineteen seventy-nine across from the park, that the owner or somebody with the house had already started to demolish the house, actually, almost by hand, in order to save the wood and all that. So once we serve him that judgment that says you have six months and they start, then it would appear to me that if they're applying, if they're responding to the appeal we made to them, that they would have to thus follow that six-month rule and have it done within six months, and that you could not go into a court judgment until after the six months.
I think it's going to be highly dependent on case by case.
There's, there's nothing that prevents a city from, so all of this has its origins. Give me one second. I'll pull up the site. Yeah, just, just so we're clear on this, since, since we're starting to see results from our code enforcement. So the, the authority for a city to deal with substandard or dangerous buildings derives from provisions of the local government code, which is, which allows a city to address dangerous buildings or period structures. And just, just because a city might initially take a less aggressive approach to addressing an issue, if information comes to light and it's discovered that there is heightened danger related to the structure, the city always reserves the right to take action in, in the most immediate and aggressive way provided for under the local government code. And that, that may be a report that says efforts to demolish this building or alter it, and it's going to say, could cause harm to, to the surrounding property. And for instance, let's just say the building that we're in, it is a safe building, and there's, there's been no determination that it's unsafe. But let's say that there was a report that said this building is unsafe. It's got an adjoining wall with the library. If we came in and we started making efforts to alter the structure without the oversight and supervision from appropriate professionals, that could then damage the neighboring structure. And so ultimately, that's, that's why there could be some shift in strategy along the way, but it's all rooted in what the local government says and provides.
We, we haven't been issuing any tickets so far either. The citizens have been very compliant when he asked them to move a vehicle or, or whether it's a building permit that he's dealing with, and wires aren't laid where they're supposed to. People have actually complied, and so we haven't had to issue any tickets.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on that? All right. Jump then to.
I, I just want to, I want to make a comment about this whole thing, about the report and everything. I just feel like it's very important as a city, because we are starting to issue, you know, warnings and tickets and making sure that people are aware. It's like, we as a city need to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to be in compliance. That means if we on city property have paw grass, we need to make sure that grass is cut. If we are issuing warnings for vehicles that are parked in the road or wherever there's, that there should be or should not be, then we need to make sure that we have our stuff, you know, in order as well. Because if we don't have our stuff in order, and we're doing these reports and issuing it to people, then that's not, you know, being a very good neighbor and trying to set a standard as a city if we can't even comply with what we're asking our residents to comply with. So I wanted to make sure that I said that, that it's on the record, and we need to make sure that our house is clean before we start going to anybody else's house.
Yeah, accountability is cuts both ways, that's for sure. I want to go to page seven in your packet. This is a question, which was brought up in a previous city council meeting regarding our IT services, support services expenditures. And when we were budgeting and going through last year, we expect probably somewhere fees that we saw in October, which was about nine hundred dollars, just south of nine hundred dollars. Since then, there's been a significant expansion of our costs. And even more recently, the most recent month that's on this chart is March, where it's three thousand dollars for a given month. The invoices were received for April. It's even worse than that. It was four thousand eight hundred dollars. Outrageous.
We call them all this?
Oh, yeah. So one of, one of the significant cost drivers that we identified is the data backup fees. It started off at two hundred dollars, and they succeeded to getting close to over a thousand dollars. And by the time we got to April, it was over two thousand dollars, which we're being charged a rate of three dollars and fifty cents per gigabyte of storage backup, which is outrageous, considering the fact that you can go to Best Buy and buy a five terabytes hard drive for a hundred bucks. So we've, we have aggressively taken action to ensure that we don't have charges like this again in the future regarding our data backup. We purchased a external hard drive and are putting files on it, on that to reduce the amount of data held in a local server that's being backed up, frankly. We've created some other folders and things that are exempt from being backed up, so that you can still access them on a server, but not getting charged this, this backup rate. And we've, we've reduced it quite significantly, got back down under fifty gigabytes, maybe even less by now. Big hand goes out to Adrian for making that happen. We've also began discussions with Microsoft's the sales rep for their small business, local government, about other service provisions that we can get through them, including cloud hosting of our, of our data, which had a greatly reduced cost. The issue there is, we still need to maintain or hire an IT service, whether it's an employee or this company like we have with Versio, to maintain user accounts and IT help desk level services, reset password kind of stuff. I let Versio know that it's our intention, our intention to renegotiate our contract on, on terms that are more viable, more in line with market conditions, especially when it comes to storage. And also to better support the city in using the latest and greatest office software and networking capabilities that we don't, are not currently able to leverage through their services, such as Office three sixty-five with Microsoft Teams and other available features that, that I think would help the efficiency up. So we put them on notice that we intend to, to renegotiate this contract. And they, they indicated a willingness to consider that. This, as I said in the email to them, they boiled the frog on this one, where they slowly turned up the heat. And it wasn't until a while ago, I said, wait a minute, what is cooking? Oh, it's us.
So real quick, what, what is our contract, what's our contract in with them?
It's, it exists until it's canceled.
Can we cancel it anytime?
We would not want to cancel it without having other services.
Okay, so we, but I'll just ask you, so we can, if we get on the provider, we can cancel it anytime. Put it out for bid.
That's what we're doing.
Put it for bid and get rid of them. If they want to, if they're ripping us off, let's get rid of them. Done.
You will notice also on here, increase in, I worry, the number of help tickets. In November, we had a significant number of help tickets. Then in April, we had even a more significant level of help tickets that were required. So a lot of that has to do when, when we have new employees join. When we hire chief of police, he was able to get into our police department and find what he, what needed to be done. And so there's a lot of help tickets created there. And most recently, we had, we almost had a complete failure in the police department with some of our IT services. So we had somebody on site for almost an entire day trying to fix, work through those issues. Like, physical hardware updates to the computers, to expand the RAM and things that could run the programs we need to run, to try to get, get an extra year or two out of our Panasonic tough book laptops and patrol cars and other. That's also a driver. It kind of happens when you have new employees and things and stuff like that, but it's also something you can consider.
Is there billing pretty big though?
Yeah, you'll see a copy of their bill on, in your packets.
Okay.
Right here on floor four, the twenty twenty-two, when it says add account, does that mean they're just adding somebody to the, to the server at a charge of one hundred and twenty-five dollars?
So the one hundred and twenty-five is the hourly rate for our support services. And so almost any level of support, even if it's a password reset, will account for a quarter of an hour. So in that case, we got charged thirty-one dollars, twenty-five cents.
And then just so that way that the council is aware that on our email, whenever you do, you, there was an option for you just to send an email to everyone. So whenever I saw that, I wanted to expand on that, because I wanted to see who everyone was listed in the email and who all was getting emails. And on there, there was names that were on there that are no longer employed by the city, no longer on council. Some of the names I did not even recognize. But anyway, I brought that to Bo's attention. He stated that he just had to get with somebody to make sure that the list was updated. But I believe that for everybody that is receiving an email, we do get charged per, per person that's on there. So as a city, we've been paying money for the people who were on the email that weren't even employed or even a part of the city any longer. So that was a charge that was coming out, you know, of funds needlessly for, with Versio.
Yeah, so and if you look at the most recent invoice, our email hosting services has thirty-one accounts at a charge of three hundred and ten dollars. One of the complications that we face within deleting those accounts are record retention. We witnessed that recently when we had a request for records regarding all police chiefs' email files. And some emails have a, have a lesser retention than others. So generally speaking, it's roughly about two years. There might be some emails that have to be retained for as much as four. When we spoke with the Microsoft rep on different solutions, they, through their cloud hosting services in Microsoft three sixty-five, they can archive these emails under a single account fee that would greatly reduce, in our case, probably about one hundred and fifty dollars a month that we could save. And that's another frustration. Are, some users in the city have Office three sixty-five, which comes with Outlook services. And based on the level of support or subscription you get with Microsoft, you also get Microsoft Exchange, which is a server that runs your email server. We, we're almost paying unnecessary additional cost by also having the Zimbra account. Zimbra is an open source email platform also, so it's.
So Jared, the, the people that who are on the email, that whenever you reply to everyone, if they still have their account and they still have their password, they're able to access their email?
I don't believe so.
If you don't know for sure.
But we did take half of the people on the list. Yesterday.
So if I could interject on that, what Bo Percy is the director, head person for Versio. He's, what he's doing is, one of the things that'll be in open source, you can create scripts and codes, and that's why they're so big on that. So those emails aren't being used. For, for instance, Sylvia Gomez, she has several records of elections and city council meetings, and some of them are only on email. And so part of the Open Records Act says that those records need to be saved for two years, four years. Correspondences between the public, just from that email account, is open to public record. And so what Bo is doing, and what I spoke with him about, is he's going to put all those emails that are inactive together into an archive folder. And so that request, that ticket was submitted yesterday. He hasn't done this before, and so he's typing up a code to do that. And so doing so would reduce our cost of that monthly base ten dollar per account to reduce costs, but he hasn't given me a cost yet. It's his first time doing it.
Sounds expensive.
Expensive. An hour to do something like that. So I guess the big point here is that you guys are looking at other companies.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, that's one, that's one big, I mean, I know that's a lot of work.
Our hope was that by purchasing a small business account with, or opening a small business account with Microsoft, that we get a lot of those services added on, even through like possibly a premium subscription, or it's still be cheaper. Yeah. The problem that we face there is, if we went that route, you lose, you lose some of the help desk level support. And what you get is kind of a on-demand waiting line. It might be twenty-four hours for someone to reach out to you and give you a link to a YouTube video for you to fix your own.
That's the benefit of having this company under other companies.
Other companies, other companies do this work. We reached that the Texas Department of Information Resources, Texas DIR. They put out contracts that all the state agencies and local governments and political organizations have access to. And I reached out to them, sent them an email, and let them know that we would love to take advantage of the shared resources. And they already have pre-vetted companies who do this sort of work on contract, prices already negotiated. Should be as simple as issuing a pass order, bring a request for quotes to get that. We're still waiting on that, that feedback from them, but we're, we're looking at that's almost every option.
Yeah, it's really the only other option you could do here besides vetting out, going through these and seeing what we're going too extensive on, right?
Okay.
Oh, you're fine. I guess my question is, are they, are they nervous, or do they know they're on the chopping block, or are they changing their attitude? They're trying to stay as funny.
I think, I think the conversation that you're
Is there our time? We're, we're going to leave people, I mean.
I think the conversation. I think the conversation you heard from Adrian is indicative of their willingness to try to bend their own internal procedures, to meet, to start meeting the customers' requirements.
So did you tell them that we're not happy and?
We told them.
I mean, you're, you're, we could look after other options and blah, blah. Ripping us off.
It's gonna take some time. We almost made it a fight to fire before we built the next building.
Okay.
Um, so in the last two weeks, especially after we started digging in this data, realizing it, then the week after we got this invoice, um, and what's even more alarming. So we've taken, our first step was take as much action as we can to reduce our immediate costs. And then uh try to prepare ourselves for a future.
So the other, the other thing with with Sonya's point is, do all those emails have to be on the chain? To be considered in their archives or are they already archived? Another question that we don't, we don't know yet.
I'm not sure how their their structure are.
I I believe that Versio created that contact list. Like, just like, say with Google, I could go to my contacts and I could create a group. But I think they're the ones that created the group and they're the ones that add people and take people off. So um I think it needs to, you know, come from from them according to what we delegate to them and tell them who needs to be on there, who needs to be off.
I don't think it actually changed.
So, so when the the email she's referencing is like a group email account. Uh, a distribution list. That uh, sorry, was mentioning. But that, in that distribution list, have our, the full thirty-one of email accounts that we have. And what she was noticing is a large number of those are former employees.
And y'all might have noticed that I sent an email, but I wanted to see that if I sent an email, if those names that were listed on there, if they would be kicked back to me because they're no longer valid or no longer working. And none of them were kicked back to me, which is indicative that each one of those, the each person listed on there is getting an email. If the email was closed, it would have come back to me.
Yeah, so I mean, so the question is, can you, can you archive the emails and maintain compliance with the records if you need to be kept without having the email account active?
Right.
That's what we're.
Yeah, that's, that's what I negotiate with Versio.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks. All right, that's, that's it.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, Chief.
We did a good job. I would have caught this back in November. Boiled the frog. Chief, what do you want to do? These square ends first and then wrap?
As I promised you guys, a long time ago, I was gonna get some officers here and we're just the first group right now. I've got two full-time officers, Kevin Haverlaw. He's swearing in tonight. That'll be a full-time officer. Rick Sanchez, he's, y'all seen him around. He's been working now already, but we're starting him in now tonight. And Andrea Turner, uh, she's swearing in tonight.
I can move over here if you want to take pictures under the seal.
Yeah, um, I don't, want to do that? Just have them standing back there and I'm not gonna stay here, but I can, yeah, take that down. Yeah.
And then I could, I could even take pictures.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, everybody's standing together like that reminds me of my list.
I know, that's what we're gonna do. Look, we're gone.
One hat cape, that's pretty good.
Yeah, it's an expressive drawing. Be careful.
Oh, and so y'all know they brought their families with them. Good, how you doing?
Oh, I'm just, yeah, they can do that. I'm just gonna put in my name here. But yeah.
You don't want to have a messy table. You can close it. Yeah, okay. Chief, you need to get over that picture. Yeah, squeeze in the middle.
All right, we're gonna be swearing in Andrea Turner, Rick Sanchez, Kevin Haverlaw. If all three of you just want to raise your right hand for it, we're starting. I state your name. You solemnly swear or affirm. That I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Martindale Police Officer. Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability preserve, protect and defend
Preserve, protect and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state, so help God. All right. Thank you. If y'all want to come over here and sign this and then we'll go on and get it, make it official.
So we have an office pool and whoever catches the first hundred mile an hour speeder gets a free lunch or something. My chips on on Rick here. He's already dressed.
Were you taking pictures there?
Uh, no, I was out way in the back. Did you, are you only?
I appreciate that. That's all the families and your families here to Martindale and work with everybody. Got a little bit of training to do to get them all up and like I say, waiting our uniforms, been in that process to get the uniforms on here. So that's all coming here. It's just uh ordering patches and order stuff like that is just people are behind and going, so they're working on that. Um, working on getting a professional blotter and report to you guys. I'll put this together.
Ask you a question before you go to the box. Okay, so you've got a reserve officer or a salary or what what is the status of of these?
Rick Sanchez and Kevin Haverlaw are both full-time peace officers. They'll be here full-time controlling our city. And then Andrea Turner is a reserve. And I'm gonna work on a few more reserves now. I just want to get these done and then I'll work on the next batch of reserves. So I just want to get.
And reserves means that they're just working to keep their.
They're working to keep their commissioner coming here voluntarily and to come here and work.
I guess my question of having these other additional officers will be, will be close to twenty-four hour protection. Seven days later.
Yes, we're close.
Thank you.
Still a call. I get called out all the time. I know y'all saw the guardrail is uh well-run and everything. I got called up that five in the morning. Uh, come here and work that crash, so.
Intoxicated person?
No, 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 it was a young kid and fell asleep at the wheel.
You're okay?
Yeah, he's perfectly fine. Um, yeah, he's no injuries. I mean, other than his pride and his car. Oh, you know what? When I got there, I saw it. I said, oh, and he was just standing there talking to me. He was fine. He just fell asleep with his young boy. And back home, he didn't, uh, pray, and he just had.
At six o'clock in the morning?
He had, uh, yes, he had slept at a friend's house. He'd gone out. But he had done the right thing, stayed at a friend's house and was making his way home.
I heard too much here.
He's, he's probably good and his, his family's there, his mom and dad came, you know, they rushed her right away.
Well, drank coffee.
So later in the game, as they become on more full board, then we would talk with you later about in terms of of when they might, or not when they would go to the park exactly, but what you would explain their duties or they're just normal routine.
Right, so I can talk about the park. You go down here and you say, hey, let's get all the cars parked on each side of the road. And I'm down there. People come down here and park on the side of the road. We can't be everywhere and we can't have three or four officers on at a time to be in all these locations. It's just not feasible. So we bounce around and and go in and talk to the folks. That's what I've been doing, going down there. Uh, say, hey, you can't have cans here. You can't have these disposable containers. Can't park here behind these butter sticks. You gotta move these vehicles up front. I've been writing warnings for that. I wrote warnings down here. We talked about that. I don't think there's proper signage enough. I think there'd be more signs. Uh, what you look at is really not, uh, it's confusing. At most, so I can say if I'm confused to go down there and where do I park and where do I not park? How would, how would you know the citizens that like Sonya said, we have to clean our own stuff up before we can go start enforcing these things. And I think it's really confusing for the people. And then when one car parks there and then a whole bunch of others park there. So you just gotta be quick and get on it.
And I guess my question as a city council person, what can we do? Assist you, what, what do we need to do, you know, add to our ordinances, make a new ordinance?
I I think the one that needs to be clear, I think the signage needs to be pushed. I I think we, that all needs to.
Jim, if you're hearing this, chairperson, we need to, we need to get the Park Advisory Commission involved with this. Because it's, because my concern is, uh, Sam Marcus had the same problem. For example, they ban barbecue pits. They'd allow them in the river and they've had issues. People fighting for space. They had gangs down there. And the last thing I want, I don't want no party pit at these parks. That's what, that was not, that was not my goal to do to dedicate this land, parkland. We need, we want it family-friendly and.
Well, I can, I can speak on my personal belief on that, but.
Okay, I'm just saying, what can we do to help you?
I think you should charge people. Martinville residents should be free, but I think anyone else that goes down it, because they they realize that this is everybody from everywhere. When I go down and talk to people, they're from everywhere. And they found out, hey, we got a free place to get on the river or like hard to make a little bit of money to help clean up the place and maybe pay for some of these signs. It's my thoughts. Um, I I don't know if that's a good idea or whatnot, but it's it's a good idea. Some of the vehicles that you mentioned going down there and that I've seen going down there are going down there to load up their stuff and not leave their trash. Hey, I don't want to carry my trash. And so they pull their vehicle down there before we're.
This is like the stage one. Now, that's another issue. That's another one. I don't get, that's another issue. That uh, the, I was told, I heard that they were trespassing on private property. Mr. Calloway's property, which is adjacent to Allen Bates uh property. They're going across the barricades, going through his property. And guess what? I emailed the man. I said, you, you, let's let you know that your people are trespassing on the property.
But there was no barricades and.
Still let the landlord needs to be aware of what's going on on his personal property, I guess.
We're getting off track. We need to get back to.
Well, this is something really actually to discuss with him now that we have him here in order to do this. And the things that I have been seeing in the past few weeks is something that he has been seeing. And if I know and acknowledge that he has been seeing it and is now reinforcing what I think that he is going down there and speaking to people and saying that he is enforcing the can ban, then I'm encouraged to 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 hear this. I mean, we have to have a discussion with 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 him about about these things.
I'm gonna suggest, how about Park, Missouri, Chairperson? How about if we have a workshop, we bring, bring people in, bring the chief in. They can start brain, you know, brainstorming what what we can do. We might maybe need to look at what Sam Marcus does. They've been going through this, new bronfals. My concern is the stickers out about this place and with with the growth, with the drought, with everything else, we're gonna get in. It's gonna be one of our major problems, you know?
There was no place to park at Allen Bay on Saturday or Sunday. There was cars everywhere.
Well, and that's because of the concerts too.
Still, it's gonna get, it's gonna.
These are all people down the river.
At the river.
But you can't blame, but I'm still.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's gonna take more talking than
And just.
Thank you. And I have been going there trying to work with it. And but like I say, when you go, we leave one spot to go to another. You can't beat them on and they just fill up and start parking it. So that's some of the issues.
So I think um what's really important, like to focus on is also what he said is like about the signage. So if we need to just you know, either have more signs. There's another thing that I wanted to also speak about. It's that um I've heard that the ordinance is not, it was not codified, but we as a council have never made um, a uh to to uplift, to lift the emergency order that we put in place with Omnicron, with COVID, whenever that happened. Nor has the governor of Texas lifted that either. So we're still under that emergency order. And we put that there whenever all the no parking signs happen, whenever COVID happened, to keep the people away. So we as a council have never lifted that order. Um, that has not been something that has been done, nor has Governor Abbott done it.
We can look into, to our, our records. Um, how would say on this issue of parking and such? Um, I just had a meeting with the staff yesterday on revising our nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-four, nineteen eighty-six. When there's a series of parking ordinances that were left off the complication in twenty twelve that were passed in the nineteen eighties regarding River Road and Lockhart Street and Highway eighty and some other places. For our staff, we're gonna draft a version of that and then share it with the chief or police chief and also get shop it with the uh chief in the fire department to better understand, you know, issued really emergency vehicle access, especially in the downtown, when there's big events happening like the Mike Giller big concert series down here. We can use use that. What address at least Skull Road Bridge could also address nineteen seventy nine. I don't know if there's parking issues along that road right now. And then as it comes to the parks. Yeah, we'll. That's that's another policy discussion for another time. I think that's something that.
Can we just hear that workshop?
To the workshop. Pretty obvious.
But I say that we do need to look at what I was discussing. And hopefully I'll win twenty dollars over here.
I did not bet the smaller council. I'll just give her the twenty dollars.
No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
My 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 recollection, and it's been a long time since I've looked at it, what I recall the governor did was that he he said that any emergency orders that conflict with his orders are void. So any I I I mean, I look into it if we need to, but I think the present landscape is whatever orders the governor has in place are valid. But if if ours conflict with those, then they're no void and no force of effect. I think that's what it is.
But we at the council wouldn't need to.
No.
Okay, let's just make sure.
Okay.
I had a meeting with the chief and a firm manager in Cochran, who's a water sparring judge. They're at the water sparring this weekend. There's going to be parking issues and he came up and told told Tommy what what's going on and what we need to do. So we were just kind of hashing around. Maybe when we talk in a workshop, maybe a special use permit. If you're gonna have a big event, you know, have a permit. You come in for a permit. That way you can hear our constantly with the police to regulate traffic.
And that's probably what we'll have to do because we know this is coming. We had a month last week of cars parking everywhere, possibly no parking areas, right? And so do we want to go down and enforce those when everybody we're having a good festival? We don't really. But we also can't say, ah, we're telling this group of people to do that thing. And turn a blind eye. That's what we want to do. So maybe a permitting type issue or something like that would be the best option. But I think that that would be a workshop.
Yeah, I mean, I told that large sparring paddlers, I'm a paddler, they need to follow rules like everybody. It's not going to pick on just a certain group. It's gotta be across the board for any any event.
Well, and you mentioned the signs on Northwest River Road, and I thought they were mostly in place to prevent overflow from the Skull Bridge parking lots go into prevent it from being in the residential area. I I thought that's why those signs were.
They were put there whenever we had the pandemic that was going on. And it was to, you know, eliminate that being a hotspot for like a super spreader area, you know, for people down there. I think that's whenever we put the signs.
What is what is the sign set?
No parking.
No parking. The ones right at the at that particular location do not have the arrows on it.
But my recollection is it's otherwise consistent with what the the city's code of ordinance set.
Well, there's some say no parking on each side of the road on this end. But it really is not. And then there's none past the stop sign.
Right.
And then but then way down on the other end, probably in about the seven, eight hundred block, there's one sign that no parking on either side.
But I mean, in any given, it's your it's your recommendation, the new sign is more.
More signs.
Delineating where the no parking area should be put.
Absolutely, sir. Yes, sir.
So I just want to say, if people are coming here or wherever and they have to pay or they don't, you can't tell people they can't go to the river. You need to make it, you need to make it doable, that they have a place to park and carry their boats or whatever and follow the law, maybe pay a parking fee or whatever parking fee. You know, it's you can't say, you can't come here because we don't want you to come here. So just.
No, we're not.
Just go somewhere else.
And that, no, that's not what it's about. But I know I had to call Sunday because some, there was a little girl that darted into the road. The citizen called me visibly upset because she almost ran over this child that was unsupervised, running into the middle of the road to cross to the cars that were parked across the road in the no parking area. Yes, sir.
Well, that's that's all city, right? Or not? That's private? I don't know what.
It's not.
The land, the land is private, but it is city land. Yes. And we can regulate it.
It's a great spot. People want to go.
And things fill up too. I mean, you say, hey, I'm full here. That's all. That's all you can let a lot.
But I'll say this again, what I do not want to have is a party pit like Don's Fish Camp or something like that. I do. I do. I do not want this in the city. We, you know, I want families to come and have their kids, but I want disposable container ban and I don't want any alcohol.
And that's all I've seen down there.
Good. That's that's what I'm.
Ignovable exception.
And then one one last thing I'll say, because I read something on the Facebook page about a resident that lives on the other side of the river from phase one. And he was complaining about the noise and the music and how loud it was in that in from his home in his kitchen. He can hear how loud the music is. But at phase one, the only sign we have is that you cannot drive past that point. We have no sign about anything, about music, about barbecuing, about drinking, about any of those things. So I think it's us into this workshop and get.
For enforcing law for music and stuff, it would have to be eighty five decibel at his house, inside his house.
But even if in our parks, could we have an ordinance?
You can have an ordinance to make it lower, but.
Well, you know, really, we need, we need to discuss this.
And you can.
Even what they say like, if it's too loud, you're too.
Right.
If you're too loud, you're too old.
I started proud of myself and picked it together. Talk to I see, they don't have no, we don't have it on our computers to be able to do this. I built it on my own. But I want you also to see that one thing I want to point out is, you know, we don't want to be a speed trap. So I put a whole lot of different violations on here. So you can see that they're writing a whole lot of different violations, not just speeding. Now, there are a lot of speeding tickets on there, so I'm not going to lie, we're forty eighth. I mean, there's a lot of speeders here and, you know, and I could talk to each one individually and I have a threshold. And and so there there every one of those is deserving. So with that being said, but I wrote some others at large. I wrote, I did about one citation this. And and that that dog actually bit someone. So I'm I'm with that. But there's a lot, there's a lot of different violations. I want y'all to see that and not so everybody don't say, hey, well, you know, the police department's out here creating a speed trap and I don't want that.
We don't want that. We say.
We want it safe, but we also don't want to sit there and say, hey, this.
Because nobody was unfortunate for years.
Hey, hey, that's the fact. That's the fact.
And I'm gonna work on getting an actual activity blotter. Once the officers are up and running, you'll see an activity blotter for what are we doing when we're doing it. So you'll see that. And with respect to privacy also for the citizens, we don't have, you know, a lower eleven hundred people here. So we don't want to call them out for stuff that happens at someone's house as well.
I had a question on the violation. You have two violations for failure to maintain financial responsibility.
Yes, sir.
What 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 does that mean?
Not no lawful interest.
That was my question too.
That's the formal title.
It's a police lingo.
No, that's the, that's the legislators lingo.
Oh.
Our, our no lawful interest.
So what's what's the difference between operating an unregistered vehicle and having an expired red registration? One's one's expired and one doesn't have it or?
Doesn't have a registration period. It was no sticker on the. No license plate period. It was the, that was a motorcycle that I caught that was going seventy two and on on River Road. So seventy two and thirty is a little quick.
Oh, yeah. They go to Dale?
No, no. Got some citations.
Is that the one? Was that the one that cried for you?
He just wasn't thinking.
So on the speeding, forty eight violations, are you finding that they're mostly people that are from other parts of the state and they're just driving through and they just don't?
Just people. This is, I mean, just people. I I don't really, when I write them their citation, I I see their IDs and see where they're from, but I really don't pay attention to that part at all.
I can tell you, Sam, a lot of people that come through municipal court, there's there's a lot of people that are going from Houston area to Texas state.
Let me guess their age. Let me guess.
I mean, it runs the spectrum.
It does.
It isn't limited to any particular group. I mean, it does. It runs the spectrum.
It's just. Really look at the tickets.
I think that's male and they're all.
And I don't want that to be like a thing either. So, you know, we we just sat there unfortunate. I don't care where they're from or whatnot. And we don't pay attention to that. Do our things. And then people get warnings as well. Y'all see, there's twenty two warnings on there. So people do get warnings for things.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ready to answer a question from the public or not?
I just want to say from the forty eight speeding grade, now passing certain vehicles, does that mean they're in the middle lane or asked for?
No.
No, that's.
Passing certain vehicles is when you pass a police car or a wrecker or ambulance that's on the side of the road with their lights on. And that's, yes, you can't, yeah, you don't slow down to either twenty miles an hour below the posted speed limit or move change lanes.
How far above the speed limit people?
Stop being there.
How far above the speed limit?
So if I have a threshold, but I'd rather not say, I mean, that way.
Try him. Try him, maybe.
Just go out there, start at fifty, go over there, say what he pulls you over.
Tommy, 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 I I'm going to tell you as the city's attorney, in the thought that I don't want to answer you, don't answer that question.
Yes, yes.
Don't do that.
I I wanted to ask our attorney because like, I mean, I know we're talking about citation and stuff. I cannot help it, but every time we do, I talked to the chief yesterday and like talking about the number of speeding tickets that are issued gives, it makes me cringe. I think just because like we've had, we're notorious before for no being known as a speed trap. I think when we talk about it and we're kind of like, you know, hey, this many citations, whatever, I think that that also kind of will like eventually like lead into like saying, hey, this is what's going on. This is, you know, so we're openly, you know, discussing it. I really do like the report, like the whole, seeing the whole big picture of the community. But I just wanted to make sure to say that whenever we're putting a focus on like tickets.
Yeah, I mean, it's 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 a very valid question. And and I mean, ultimately, what you've got are these these two competing horses. Well, I have a few things. One, Martin Dell has a history, but I think as Mike would say, that that's that's asked. And I think that's where we need to leave it. Two, there there is a provision under state law that mandates that a city not evaluate the performance of peace officers based on the issuance of tickets. However, if if in reporting the information and activities of a city, the city's chief decides to share certain information, that's within the chief's discretion as the chief law enforcement officer of the city. But we have to be very mindful in the way that we operate as a city and and as this council to not make the number of tickets written for speeding or or anything else.
That's why we.
As 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 part of the announcement.
We have you, right? And who and the judge, right? The judge?
Well, no, no, he's he's different.
I'm saying you you guys, you know, you guys are all professionals and you need to take care of us to make sure we don't get in trouble.
I think all the violations you write for are to protect the community. That's my, that's my mark.
And that's what.
Yeah.
And if people don't want a ticket, they can slow down or they can go a different way.
Exactly.
Right, but but the point thing where the the city has not, is not, and will not entertain setting a standard that attempts to alter behavior based on the issuance of tickets. And and Doctor, as 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 much as I know your heart's in the right place, that will never be the standard for the city. Because if we set the, if we set the standard that if you, if you don't want to slow down, go a different way, I think that opens a slippery slope. Bottom line is we're a city where the law is enforced. And that's it.
Who writes speed? I mean, who writes speed limits? Not the city.
Depends on depends on what kind of road it is. We're not writing it, but but on some streets here in the city, we have discretion.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome forward.
Good job. Okay, is the judge still here, I hope?
I didn't hear his motorcycle. We'll hear it.
Well, I did. Hey, we'll add him to the list.
Thank you, John.
Hello again.
Hello.
All right, I guess everybody's got to look for. And the figures, my figures estimate on what your controller are recurring on all our reports. And I will take any questions if anybody has.
So you have new five, new citations. So these are all under process. So that the collected fines, they'll add up.
Oh, I missed this decimal points on that first one. I'm sorry. Yes, that that's for the bond. So those are those are all still pending. And some of them have, that's not true. Some of them would have already been resolved probably. So. During the COVID period, there was a lag in in serving warrants and and reducing or reducing the backlog of the warrants. And so have you found that it's accelerated or improved or you're getting more accomplished or?
Yes, you know, COVID hurt everybody. It was a whole big mess and and it was just uncharted territory. And so everybody was kind of just shutting everything down, like to see what everybody else was going to do and what the state corporate can say. But yeah, things are back. I I think we'll be doing great things in the very near future with the new staff and the health that we've got and everything. And the council we got and a lot of a lot of reasons. I expect a lot of good things to come up. I'm excited about that.
I wanted to ask, are your records now aligned with the officers reporting? I know that there was some discrepancy.
Yeah, last time we talked about that.
Yes, sir.
We, they weren't actually out of alignment as much as, well, they kind of were by a few because I and I don't remember which way it was now. I was showing up that there were warnings. Okay, and the numbers he had, there weren't. And so that was giving us a, you know, a three or four discrepancy, whatever it was. And it turns out that there were in fact no warnings given. But my report, what it was showing up is, and I haven't, to be honest, I haven't compared that with him, but we're.
We'll monitor it. Is it starting to match up closer?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm just ready, waiting for him to ride into the sunset.
Thank you, y'all.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Be sure to well that.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, it is now seven forty and we'll take a few minutes for to break. And then we're going to go into executive session. So we will need the public to leave.
We're locked.
Okay, it's seven fifty three and we will resume our regular session session of the city council meeting on June seventh. And we are here to discuss the contract for the police. And we are right now at five point one, the discussion phase. So if any city council members have any questions now is the time.
Are we just discussing his contract or the other officers as well?
Just his. And did we get the revised contract? There was no revision on the contract.
There was one mention, I think, of adjusting the twenty four equal installments on the compensation to twenty six. That's that's the only administrative change, I believe, was.
In the address.
Twenty six pay periods versus twenty four.
And then I thought I had asked or discussed that because originally when he was hired and he said no to the benefits that we we talked about that that could be discussed every year. So I think, you know, that the way that it is written in the contract, it states that, yes, he can get benefits or, you know, if it's like we hired him because it was no benefits, like that wouldn't be stated in the contract.
Hey, Jared, do you think that you can?
Okay, that's what I was going to say. What what I would suggest we do is let's let's look through each section and see if there's an objection to it. And then then we can.
and see if there's an objection to it, and then, then we can, we can go from there. The first one is pretty innocuous, and I don't think there would be an objection to it, but, and what you think? Can you put it up on this screen as well?
Oh, thank you. Get a quick about that.
I just need you to whittle the wire back to TV.
Get the duck taken by the.
It's all other size, so you can see there.
Ooh.
There.
Just made a hammer. This bad boy here.
Yeah. There it goes.
It's like the whistle.
It's like tall.
I can see well, but he's glass.
That's why you go left.
Yeah.
On post.
Point order.
So the first one is, is pretty, pretty innocuous. City's agreeing to hire Tommy as the chief of police until he does one of two things, resigns or is removed in accordance with the local government code. Section twenty-two zero seven seven local government code is what, um, what states how a municipal officer may be removed under the law.
And how is that exactly?
Forfit's vote. If what? Forfit's vote. But it would have to do something wrong first. No, you can, you can get rid, I mean, it's, the standard is the same as the same as the same as is. Right, it's, it's forfeit start under the law.
So the employment.
At will, I mean, sorry, not as is, at will employment. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's at will employment modified by what the local government code says, because, I mean, technically, under, under at will employment, uh, I'll take it, someone that works for the city that is not an officer could be removed either by, uh, some, some combination of the mayor or, or Jared, or the council acting by a simple majority vote. However, the local government code has created a standard that, to some degree, insulates non-elected officers uh, from, from termination and only allows termination by forfeit's vote, so that's all section one says.
And then, so on the term right there, um, so it's, his contract will just keep going until he is either?
He is the chief of police until he is, either resigns or is removed in accordance with all, and quite frankly, I think that's the way that it, it shakes out anyway, because you can put a term on something, but then, under the local government code, that person is still the officer until they're removed. Well, I mean, but I thought prior to this, that there was this contract, talk of having a contract or not having a contract. This, this, this effectively defines the terms beyond what the, what the local government code says, payments, hours, duties, benefits, et cetera, all of those other things, so that's what the contract helps to buy. But not a time linked time when the contract is in place or when it can be renewed. Well, he, he's, Tommy's technically already been sworn in as the chief of police, so he, he has the position of chief of police, an officer of the city bestowed upon him, and he holds that position until he resigns or is removed in accordance with the law. Now all we're doing is coming back and defining those other terms that, that state law doesn't otherwise provide. There's, there's no other condition that puts time limits on the length of period this contract, this contract's in place as long as he's. Okay. I don't think there's any objections with that. Section two, it's, it's intentionally vague, and here's why, I don't, I, I mean, mu- much like I would say that any city council oughtn't be micromanaging the duties of, of, of a lawyer or, or an accountant, they oughtn't be micromanaging the duties of, of, of police chief. Tommy is the foremost expert in being a law enforcement officer employed by the city, and so these duties are intentionally distilled to being very basic, uh, to say, listen, you gotta do the things that a police chief normally does, um, and perform the standard duties of a police chief and also of a Texas peace officer. And we're trusting, based on the hiring process and the vote of this council, that he knows his business and will effectively complete his job. And then, the next part is we've got the thirty-two hour point, and Tommy, do you wanna address that?
Yes, I wanted to bring this, this is the form that every police officer has to fill out, just what we've filled out tonight. Y'all heard the oath of office, but this is actually the real form that goes to the state, right? So this is the form, and I will show you, this is what it specifically indicates, sorry, this is actually one of the real ones, I'm gonna get a turn it to work, Tommy. This is what the law says.
Okay, got it.
I'm just.
Nailing it.
Yes, well, yes, this is actually someone signed one, sir.
So, um, could we describe that for?
Or maybe?
Yes, I'll read it for you, uh, so it says, a full-time peace officer pay status as defined by section six fourteen, one twenty-one of the government code, says full-time officer regularly works thirty-two hours a week or more and pay that or above minimum federal wage and eligible for benefits, that's the exact verbiage, so, uh, if y'all wanna see this, that's what's the form.
So what it says now is you shall work thirty-two hours a week on night and weekends, I think that we, we may want to insert the words at least.
That's fine, that'll get that celebrated.
If there's any other thoughts on that?
I thought it was on your computer.
It is, we will.
At least.
So, right, so, so where it says, the last sentence, chief shall work inserted at least thirty-two hours a week on night and weekend. So effectively, this is, this is establishing the full-time status and setting the minimum number of hours that Tommy shall work, provided however, those hours may be more, and they shall be worked on nights and weekends.
Um, like on, on that, what are, what are we gonna do, like, as a city, because, uh, I know that, you know, if it, it's, it's like that, but like you're saying, it could be more hours.
Right.
It could be like, what are we gonna do about like, the, if there is like hours that are like comp time, like if, if these hours are banked, is this something that's gonna continue to go on and on and like follow him, and, you know, is this something that we're gonna have to like, you know, say if something does happen or whatever, then we'll have to pay him as a city, everything that, what?
So we, I'm working on a, on an employee policy to be presented to council, and it's model law for other cities and employers. Um, in this case, the chief of police has accepted the, the Fair Labor Standards Act that handles things like overtime, compensation, those things, do not apply to this.
It's exempt, it's exempt status.
So, so in this case, you can work a hundred hours a week. If you happen to work a hundred hours a week, now the, that's where professional judgment comes in and say, okay, I've working a hundred hours come the week, let's moderate, make sure I don't burn myself out, but.
But, but there's, there's different classifications from employees on the federal law, and essentially, if you're in a, a executive management the upper level type position, then you're exempt from those requirements.
So the pay is the same, no matter how many hours.
He's on, because he's on salary.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That looks good, isn't it?
Any other thoughts on section two?
Who, where was it, it had to, that it said so many payments?
That's in the next section.
So, it's section three A, city agrees to pay chief an annual gross salary of fifty thousand dollars paid in, it needs to be twenty, twenty-six. Uh, so are there any thoughts on what is set forth in section three A other than changing from twenty-four to twenty-six? Do you need to put twenty-six bi-weekly installments, or? I mean, does the normal person think that there's twenty-six pay periods in a, in a year? I think only federal employees, so. What do you, what do you need?
I mean, that makes sense to me, but twenty-six, yeah, bi-weekly installments, I don't know.
But fifty thousand needs to be raised to fifty-two.
So would we need to change equal to bi-weekly? Yeah, I think, yeah, I, I mean, I knew that when I was a federal employee, that we had twenty-six pay periods in a, in a year, but bi-weekly doesn't, I mean, I like that, it doesn't, if someone else doesn't, that's fine.
I've got a question, 'cause in the past, I've been paying everyone by hours, and this says it's gonna be a regular flat salary, and so is that a change I need to make? Um, because each of the, he and the other turned in eighty-eight hours this time, so.
I think with any changes would be made after this contract is signed by the parties.
Yeah, it's a contract.
But, but. Until, until that happens, continue on as we're doing.
He would become a salarier.
Once this is.
Once this is signed. Well, then would he just pay him based on fifty thousand divided by twenty-six then?
Well, that's, that's, yeah, that was my question, yeah, and I think that's, it's gonna be fifty-two.
Fifty-two, it needs to be.
Fifty-two divided by, okay, we gotta change that.
Is it a recommended change?
Why is it fifty-two?
Because that's what he's making right now, if we, if it goes down to fifty, we're cutting this thing.
He's making.
He's making fifty-two.
Twenty-five times two thousand eighty. Fifty-two. Well, yeah, that's, that's a carryover from what he was making when he was interim, he was twenty-five and a half.
But I thought we had discussed that it was, um, for the hours, the way that it was, what, we talked about it last time.
Yeah, so the concern was if the minimum, that was voiced last time, if the, if only the minimum of thirty-two hours per week is what's provided as far as coverage at that rate, if, if it was, if that was a ceiling instead of a floor, then we'd be in a situation where we're overpaying in that sense, 'cause the fifty-two is based off of the forty-hour work. So that's, that's the delta, is that in that thirty-two, this thing two versus forty, um, if you took it as a thirty-two hours for this pay and only thirty-two hours was only ever worked, which hasn't been the case since he's been on board, then that extra eight hours at a twenty-five hour, twenty-five dollar per hour rate could potentially be used on an additional with part-time officer or something, that, that's what the discussion was at the time. I don't think we, as we went through section two, I think your recommendation to, to change that, uh, but that's the conversation.
I mean, I wanna ask a question, do, I mean, you, I mean, ours, we, we're counting, you work at home sometimes, you work?
Yeah, I, I.
So you answer your phone, you, I know, I know each hour to just be called, you get a phone call, I mean, so, so how, well, I mean, approximately just how much, how much, how many hours you think you work as you're following your?
I, I could say, they'll call me at one in the morning, they'll call me at three in the morning, five in the morning, just different times. Don't, I, I don't know. But I do answer my call whenever you guys call me or any citizen phone.
For the city council too, we've just started using a Excel program, I think it is, that tracks, QuickBooks that tracks hours and can track location, we had a lot of fun today watching Lee go all over town.
Boy, it's sophisticated, huh? It's sophisticated.
Yeah, and, and that's as long as the cell tower works in Martin Dell, which is questionable. So what, what I'm, what, what it's looking like is on sections one and two, there's no dispute, uh, but the first potential dispute in what this contract should look like is in three A, so if that is the case, then what I would recommend is that we have a motion as to what the annual gross salary should be, and then we can, we can proceed from there.
I, I, I want it broken down for me, I want to know, like, at fifty, at fifty thousand, you know, per hour, like, what Jared was saying, if it's a fifty-two, then that could potentially be enough for a part-time officer with what it is, I would like to see the numbers.
You're only getting.
The numbers.
Two thousand dollars for a part-time officer.
So, right now.
For a year's worth?
Right, not enough to do anything.
I thought last time we had said something about ten.
So, okay, so the math on that was fifty-two thousand dollars an hour divided by, or fifty-two thousand dollars for a year divided by two thousand eighty hours, gets you the twenty-five dollars an hour, if you only work the thirty-two. But if you, if you took twenty-five dollars an hour and multiplied by that eight hours per week, about two hundred dollars there in, for that week, over pay period is four hundred dollars, that would cover on, that can be used towards another officer, part-time officer. Working that shit is, is the point, and so it comes into, you know, how much of the budget equals how many hours of coverage? In this case, last year's budget was a hundred and twenty-five, or this current year's budget, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is what we set aside for salaries and benefits for the police department. That covered a full-time officer and three part-time officers. In this case, if we were not using part-time officers anymore as our main police force, we're using full-time officers, two full-time officers plus Tommy's also gonna be full-time, so we've gone from basically one full-time equivalent to now three full-time equivalent officers on the margins. The point is, is that if, if he's working forty hours a week, we're not losing that. If he's working only thirty-two, and there's, there, there's a little bit of a gap there that you could fill to get coverage for that, that cost, but I, I don't, I don't know if we need to be as concerned about that. And going forward, because as, as you mentioned, it's thirty-two hours is just a classification. If he only does the bare minimum, if that becomes an issue, uh, that could become part of a performance review or something like that and be handled separately.
Have you, have you worked as little as thirty-two hours since you've been the chief of police?
No.
On, 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 on average, what, how many hours a week? When you have it, is, is Tommy working, you, you have that in though?
This, this one recently was eighty hours.
Forty hours.
Eighty-eight, count on the holiday.
Exactly. So, so, so forty-four hours.
So that doesn't even count that you're taking a phone call or at your house, or somebody wants you to call in, you gotta address something. Okay, so there's, I know you can't, you can, you gotta give me, give me a rest, rough estimate.
Five, five, seven hours a week a week?
You know what, I think that, um, leaving it at fifty-two is, is fair. Um, I think that, you know, with him being police chief, I mean, like, we, we have to, like, I think, just trying to negotiate over the two thousand is, we need to just leave it at fifty-two.
Okay, so did I go?
So we can, if there's no dispute, we can move on. On, on the, on the third, uh, three B, uh, that language is included to avoid haggling over, um, pay raises e- ever so often, and builds in that standard three percent cost of living increase, which actually will result in a pay cut by next year, uh, if, if we keep trending in the direction we are, but, uh, I, I still think as a general rule, uh, three percent is, is considered to be standard and averages out over time.
How, how would that be a pay cut if we gave him the three, three percent?
It, I'm, I'm talking about inflation. So, 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 so the cost of ma- ma- making ends meet is, has increased so.
The cost of living like this past year was, I think, six or seven percent.
E- exactly, and you're saying it's below that, it doesn't even keep up with the normal. Right, but they, you know, move forward, move forward four or five years, then, you know, you're gonna have minimal inflation and you, you'll, you'll end up making out on, on the back end of it, it's just, so, but, but that, but that's intended to create a scenario where the city and Tommy don't have to haggle ever so often about pay increases, it's just that standard cost of living built in.
So it says by January first, so that means that, that of each, each year, so that means he's gonna have to have a performance review. So it says by January first, so that means that, that of each, each year, so that means he's gonna have to have a performance review before January first of each year.
Not necessarily, if, if this, if this council decides to do so.
If the salary increases, then related to performance.
It, it, it is what it is, but that will be covered in section four, but real quick on three B, is there any, any discrepancy or dispute with that?
Well, why is the January first based on a calendar year as opposed to a fiscal year?
This is what we've done in the past with our employee.
We can change it, we can change it, coincide with passage of each budget if you want to. I mean, it would seem like it would make more sense for us to, to have it more in line with fiscal year than a calendar year, because that's how we.
Okay, so, so, said increase shall be effective upon the passage of the city's.
I think, I think it would just be, January twelfth, October.
October first.
Or, yeah.
Your first, okay, that's okay.
Good, thank you.
So you're gonna pay raise soon.
Starting of next year.
Of, so it says of each year.
Starting in twenty twenty-three.
Okay, uh, do you wanna do, do we, we wanna discuss moving it from twenty-two to twenty-three?
Certainly, it's only, I mean, he's still, it's only, it's June, I mean, you still have quite a, quite a many months left until October, I mean, I would be fine with just keeping it in the way.
It's four months.
So, so, so it says said increase will be effective October one of each year with the first increase occurring in October one twenty-three.
You can prograde it.
And plus, he's already been working at that rate for.
For quite a while.
Full fiscal year. You, you gotta say.
I.
If we wanna, I, I like it as it is, if we wanna discuss it more or whatever.
I agree with you.
On the three C, chief will receive all paid time off holidays and vacation time afforded all other full-time employees, officers of the city.
Do you need to put federal holidays?
So the question I have on that is how do we handle holiday time? So, so, right, so that's been a point of contention with the police department in the past, and we really haven't had good policy to address that issue.
So I'll address it, like, with my, the staff, right, so holiday time is when people really need to be here, I think, the most part. Use those days, we can use them as flex days, so we know, I think the city has eleven, twelve, I can't remember the number off the top of my head. So those, those eight ho- those holiday hours can be used another time for the officers. So, but we really need them here on the days, all the families are here, right, because they're off, everybody's off.
Right, but this, this applies to you and only you, right?
So, the question, because it was regarding afforded to all other full-time employees, officers, other employees and officers, we take the day off, let's say Memorial Day or Thursday, he's often not working those.
I mean, it, it's, it's his department, and, and the way I look at it is, if, if he wants the, the, the employees of the city that are working under his authority, if he wants to set their schedules, that's.
This, this issue is, is the primary driver of very large liabilities regarding comp time.
So let me tell you, let me tell you what I would do, what, and, and, so it, on those weeks, this week, we submitted eighty-eight hours, right? Did we put eighty hours plus the eight hours of a holiday? In the future, I will work seventy-two hours, and take my day off somewhere along the line, and then put into the eighty hours, that eight hours is done.
How would that do? All right, and if you're already doing only thirty-two, are you just not getting?
No, seventy-two.
Holidays?
What do you mean? No.
So, so if, if your contract is saying you're working thirty-two.
Seventy-two, seventy-two.
Day off, well, there's kind of already a day off accounted for, in a normal eight-hour shift.
No, so what I'll do in that same, in that same pay period, somewhere around there, I will work seventy-two hours and then put in like eight-hour holiday, somewhere, if that makes.
I, I don't know, and this is just me, but I'm thinking, like, if you're the chief of police, and we need coverage, if it's a holiday, then you should be here.
Well, that's basically what he's saying, that he would be here because it's, it's.
The way that that says.
So, so here, here's what I would add, uh, the, the, three C ends with the period, uh, change that to a comma, provided chief may use holidays as flex days to ensure coverage on holidays.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, meaning, meaning that he will be here on holidays, but he'll take those.
That means he may.
Take those days off.
He, 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 if, if he wants to tell one of the, one of the other three.
Yeah.
That, that they're gonna cover on those days, or if he wants to cover on those days, that's left to his discretion as the head of the department, to, to provide for coverage. The, the job, I think, is to provide for coverage irrespective of who's providing it. It, it, it's, it's not our business if, if Tommy works Christmas morning or someone else does, bottom line is, just get the spot covered. And i- i- if he or anyone else ends up working Christmas morning, then that becomes a flex state that they can, they can use, so.
And I'm just going by what I'm hearing our city administrators saying of what's.
When, when we can, but I know, if, with this wording, afforded to other employees and officers of the city, if the city sets policy for all employees and officers regarding holiday and vacation time, and working on holidays, then he would be subject to that policy, so we, maybe we address it, maybe we leave the contract as it, we address it in a policy.
Yeah, because.
Again.
You're gonna have to write, uh, what is that document?
Right, so, so the officers are gonna work, no matter, they're, and they're gonna flex those as well, or get paid for them as, as they approach, so let's say the officer, like, this weekend, we worked, uh, eight hours on one, Memorial Day, whatever Memorial Day was.
Yeah, but they, you got double time for that.
Well, yes, so you get paid for, for that, that's, that's the, that's the bad side of, and just wanna show, that's the bad side of not being salary, because I would get double time for those if they, on, on the.
But, but, but not anymore, right, and, and essentially, all, all, all this does is create, um, the right for you to have a, a certain amount of a lot of time off, but you also have the duty to ensure coverage for the city, and I think your point is well taken, that could be the basis for an evaluation in some form.
On the flex, you mentioned the word flex, but could you also add that it will be, uh, accumulated as, as comp time or accrued as comp time?
What, so that's, that's where I, I, my recommendation is to leave the language as it was originally written, and we address this issue of compensatory time, ho- holidays, um, and those things in a broader policy for all city staff, because it, it is an issue that's larger than just the police department, what I, what I'm trying to be careful of is creating huge lib- I mean, not that big, but for the city our size, large liabilities and comp time on the order of tens, over ten thousand dollars or more.
Well, if you're in Tommy.
You're saying that this isn't a, these chief issues, nor a city employee issue that we need to discuss. Right, right, that's why, that's why, that's why.
So, just police departments are all under a different rule under FLSA, as far as comp time, there's a one seventy-one rule, a law for, for the eighty-hour pay, or, sorry, hundred and twenty hours, actually, and so there's some police enforcement rules that go along with that. So what my suggestion is, is we don't accrue comp time, I totally agree with Jared, that we do not accrue comp time, we use a flex time law method, I don't like the fact that so, someone could come in, and you, you sit there and bank tons of hours of comp time, and then when you gotta go, you gotta pay them out all those accounting fees, right? So, uh, so for example, uh, if, if an officer, one of the officers responds to one of those calls, uh, let's just say he's gonna work eight to five, I'm just throwing a number out there for you guys, so he works eight to five, but he gets called in at five in the morning, we're gonna flex that time backwards, we're not gonna, not gonna sit there and say, hey, you came in at five in the morning, and your regular duty's eight to five, you work five day, eight, and now you got three hours of, of comp time, I'm not gonna do that, we're gonna flex all that time off, I'm, I'm gonna be watching that, and, and making sure that's off of.
But how, how will it be understood on a documentation? Is it gonna be called flex time, or is it gonna be called comp?
I think, I think we'll, we'll address that, when that policy's presented.
But I mean, if he, he will start accruing flex time, though, immediately, as soon as we go into our next holiday.
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna.
Salary.
Yeah, I'm salary, I don't approve that additional time, the only time, only thing we're talking about here is those holidays and vacations.
So you wouldn't accrue it even?
I would approve, I would approve vacation and, and holiday time, but I'm gonna use those holidays shortly after the holidays, if that makes sense.
In, 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 in other words, in any given week, Tommy is obligated to work at minimum thirty-two hours, provided however, if in, if in any particular, one particular week, Christmas Day happens, then he would be obligated to not work on that day, but then if that causes him to fall below that thirty-two hour minimum, then that time would flex and be made up at some subsequent point in time, as he said shortly thereafter, or in the alternative, would work that time on Christmas, or have some combination of the officers working on Christmas, and then to the extent that they do, then that time would be something that they would, they would get back at a later time.
My birthday, Christmas day.
Yeah.
It is a purpose.
Oh, okay.
You got ripped off.
Hey, so since he is, since he is salary, and then it is thirty-two hours, what if he works past that, what's gonna be the amount he's gonna make past that?
Yeah.
Overtime.
No, but, like, a salary is up to thirty-two hours, but if he works, yes. That's the bond, that's the bond.
If he works a hundred hours, it doesn't.
He can't work less than thirty-two.
He, he, he is salaried, and he is, that's fifty thousand, fifty-two thousand, because that's what he's agreed to set. Um, on three, on three D, uh, I know you have reasons you wanted this in here, I think it's pretty innocuous, it says you are entitled to receive but are not required to accept all benefits afforded other full-time employees. You wanna address that?
So, y'all, y'all know I work for the state, and so I get my benefits there, and, uh, so I can, that's one thing I used, and we spoke about, about how being able to hire another officer, which would transfer those benefits over to other employees, and so um, I wasn't tying up those benefits, and we were able to afford to pass those benefits on to another full-time employee. The only benefit that I, the only benefit that I collect from the city is retirement, I, I put my money into a retirement fund, and it, it goes to that, the health insurance and so forth, I, I wait.
So you're saying.
Thank you.
You know, well, how, how, how does that work, though, if you're saying, if you injure yourself, say, while working for the city of Markville, and yet you're using your health insurance from another occupation, how?
Well, if I injured myself, I'm doing worker's health, that's a whole.
Oh, I, 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 okay, so that the health insurance is just basic, doctors' appointments and all that.
So you're saying you want to take the health insurance, et cetera, and apply to?
That's what we already did, yes.
Okay.
And how much would we talk about?
I don't know.
About nine fifty a month.
Okay. So this.
Um, performance evaluation, uh, at least once a year, we'll meet with the mayor, city administrator, receive a performance day, wishing that would be reduced to writing. Uh, lots of flexibility here, I mean, I think I've told this council, uh, numerous occasions, uh, for every officer uh, in this room, Dwayne, Adrian, Jared, Tommy, and myself, uh, you guys could evaluate this every week if you wanted to. Uh, you, you reserve that right at any point in time to conduct, uh, an evaluation of any or all of us. But this is just setting a baseline standard that is to be met, um, with no real penalty if it's not.
Could we add, uh, counsel to that?
Evaluate.
Valley G, boy.
With the council and receive a performance evaluation, um.
How, how, how about saying at least once during the fiscal year, because we've already mentioned fiscal year, uh, prior to that, and this just says once a year, but I think we need to say at least once during.
During each fiscal year.
Yes.
Okay.
Did you mean city council instead of?
Not all of them, I.
Just, well, I mean, the council is the.
Oh, this is the, so that includes the city, the city manager and the mayor, right?
Well, I mean, you, you, you could, you could include council and, and administrator, that would be fine.
Let's see, that, can we do that?
That's fine, but it's an employee, at least once during each fiscal year, will meet with the council and administrator and receive a for- performance evaluation that will be reduced to writing, um, I'm not gonna get too far into the weeds on this, but I would recommend removing that will be reduced to writing, and simply leave it at, will receive and receive a performance, performance evaluation after evaluation, cut off that sentence.
I don't know, I think you need to say something about writing, because it's not like we're gonna verbally try and.
It'll be, there'll be a document in his file.
I, I, I think that this council, as with prior councils and any future council, in its discretion, can determine to document evaluations based on cities officers as council seat that, and, uh, it could, it could be as smooth as you know, having a meeting and saying, now, we really like you, we think you're doing a great job, keep up the good work, and that will be documented in the meeting minutes, which would effectively be a written record, or in the alternative, it could be, uh, it could be a done last. I mean, that, that goes for all of us, and how you guys think we're all doing.
I, I think I like it still in writing, I, I like the writing part, because I heard that if it's not in writing, it didn't happen. If it's not in writing, it didn't happen, I think there needs to be something tangible that goes in the employee's file that, um, whoever is able to reference in future terms, you know, and it's there in their file.
So, don't use the word reduced, re- reduced makes it seem like you're reducing the performance appraisal, I mean, writing is writing, whether it's reduced.
Documented and placed in their file.
I, I, I would, the document is fine, but hypothetically speaking, let's, let's say that, um, you know, Dwayne weren't reviewed, and we had three, three members, uh, Dwayne was the greatest accountant ever, one thought he was so, so, and one said, I think he's awful. What, how, how then do you encapsulate the, 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 the results of that? And, I mean, do, do you, you create a scenario where you have effectively a vote of no confidence, and you say three voted in support, but oh, by the way, that here's a minority report, it, it, you're, you're chasing this ever elusive standard, but the, the good part about having, having the evaluation in front of the council, is that by default there's meeting minutes, because the council can't evaluate unless it does so subject to a, a, a a regular meeting or a special meeting that is called in motion for that purpose, and there's going to be meeting minutes that reflect the evaluation. And so, creating the obligation to do something above and beyond that is.
Yeah.
It, it creates a tough standard to meet.
Uh, have, do we have an exact or concise performance appraisal based on a rating procedure, or, I mean, I thought.
There are forms that have been used, um, in the past. That would be something that's.
I think, I think it's a very tough standard to meet, because, I mean, again, what are, what are the metrics for, for determining how Jared versus Adrian versus Dwayne versus Tommy versus myself, how, how we do our jobs? They're, they're all, they're all vastly different, they require different knowledge, different experience, and so to try and and distill that down to something that can be broadly applied across all of our jobs, I think is.
I mean, it doesn't have to be like that, like, there are, there are evaluations where you would evaluate yourself, and then we, as a council, are able to look at that, that document when you're in here, and then we're able to have a conversation with you, and just to see what, you know, what's going on, what, you know, you're, oh, you're amazing, you're always easy to reach by phone, you know, like.
You know, you know what I think would be the easiest way to do this is, um, uh, to, 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 employee at least once during each fiscal year will meet with the council and receive a performance evaluation, uh, with each council member being given the opportunity to provide written comments, that will be part of the meeting minutes. So if someone wants to provide a, a personalized evaluation, then you can, and it'd be part, it'd be part of the minutes.
That's good.
That sounded good.
Yeah, I like that.
Evaluation, comma.
That sounds great. That sounds great.
Just don't evaluate.
You like that too, right?
Anyway, so.
Council member being allowed to provide written comments that will be made part of the meeting minutes. So whoever wants to put in the work and effort can do that. Is council member one more or two?
I use it as one, and I think the different, different style guy.
So clarifications, we say city council, that includes the mayor. Got it, okay.
Uh, the next section is pure boilerplate, but we need to change your address. I'll take that off the screen. And we can, we can update that off. You know, we need to do that, that's right. And then after that, it is called boilerplate. And I don't, I don't think that anything is specific to this agreement anymore, it's just.
So if it becomes a matter of public record, then his address is in there?
Have to redact it.
Okay.
Yep. So if, if we wanna go line by line over the, over the rest of the contract, we can, but I think everyone's had occasion to review it, and it is literally the, it has nothing to do specifically with Tommy's performance as police chief, it is standard stuff that would be included in this contract.
I, I just want, I just want to know how you feel, because like when we put it out there, we put it out there for forty hours, we advertised it, you know, differently than what we're going to be, you know, what we reviewed tonight. So actually, at the council and as a city, what we put out, you know, whenever we were hiring for this, this position, we've actually gone against some of the things that we said, how we hired it, what we hired for the position.
That was us to be green, to be of the hiring process of police chief. I think for here on out, knowing that there's a guideline for the police from the police. Because that state.
Yes.
Yeah, from, from that corridor, then we.
So all police, all police chiefs in the state of Texas, or wherever, where that paper is from, they work a minimum of thirty-two hours.
To be classified as full-time. Because it's, it's purely an issue of classification.
It's a T-CO.
So they can work more than that.
At least.
It's just the bottom.
And get paid above minimum wage.
I hear what you're saying, so they wanna hold us to standards.
Like, yeah, if that was how it was, and.
But there again, if there's standards that we are unaware of, now we're aware of it, and we can hold ourselves to those standards.
Any other concerns? Okay, then let's move on to five-two, consideration on approving the chief of police employment contract.
Based on the conversation that we had tonight and the formalities that are required by T-CO, I would like to go ahead and make a motion on approving the chief police employment contract as presented with the corrections.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? Does anybody have anything more to add?
So there's nothing about, in the contract about, say, use of the vehicle, going home, or getting paid for mileage, or none of those other things fall into the, into the contract?
That would be under what you're gonna do, right?
Well, some of that, the, the take-home vehicle is something that really should be policy set by the police department, and that policy having been endorsed by the city council. If, in a hypothetical, if he decided to take his vehicle and drive to the beach and back, the city council could evaluate his performance in that regard.
I think a lot worse things could happen if you did that, couldn't that? What, what would those things be?
I'd go to jail.
Yeah, exactly.
No, so about take-home vehicles and so forth. It, I don't believe that we need that right now, we don't have the fleet, we don't have that. But we also have on-call people, so, you know, and they're coming in and doing their thing. So it just depends on what they're gonna do. I'm not gonna take one home unless something comes on, I come on, I come on, and I get called out at five o'clock in the morning, like I did the other day, come back in, leave, come, and I know I'm coming back in a few hours, why would I swap out? You see what I'm saying? That's, that just makes no sense. I didn't do it, I swapped out, but we haven't had this conversation.
This is, this is covered by the broad and general duties, although very brief, in section two, and that is, there is faith and trust placed in you that you're going to abide by the law and not violate the law and take city property and use for personal use.
Yeah, not use it for personal use, anytime it would be used, if that take-home car would be used solely for the purpose of, hey, you're coming back to work and you're on-call, we gotta compensate people for being on-call. We, we don't, we didn't discuss that period, but we, we need to compensate people for being on-call. And, and we don't have a twenty-four-hour force here yet, and so we gotta rely on being on-call.
Okay, Jared, but all, you're working on the, all the internal policy thing, but on here, and I know that, that's probably, and I've heard you, like, we gotta trust him to do what he's gonna do, but who's gonna be doing the oversight? Is there not?
All of us.
You guys, it, it's, it's like I said, with any of us, any, any of the five non-elected officers in here, if, if you, if you think something is off-kilter, you can call every single one of us in here at every meeting and evaluate us. You, you are the oversight body.
And that's why he's, that's why he's in here doing a review right now.
And, and I wouldn't say that it's, it's a review, because we're not evaluating his job performance. We're not noticed for that, but if, if you guys decided that seventy-two hours from now, you wanted to evaluate all five of us, you've got the authority to do so, and you can, and you can haul us in here and say, let's talk about your job. And so if something happens where you're questioning any of us, that is your authority to do it.
And would that be like something that would put on the agenda?
Yes. Yeah, it, it has, it has to be labeled as a performance review evaluation, and then the officer that's being evaluated has the discretion just to do that in open or executive session, it is their call.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And Sam, how do you?
I approve the contract.
Okay, so the, thank you, so the motion carries. Okay, we have just one more thing.
The city. City's getting its part to support the qualically challenged.
The proper term, qualically challenged, pair and pair.
You were talking about me earlier.
Okay, so the next item. This is one that, actually Jared came up with the answer, I was trying to think, how can we get people to submit what they want on the agenda in a timely manner? Often, Adrienne and I are sitting here on Friday afternoons, and we're still trying to get people to submit their reports and approve the agenda and stuff. And so it was suggested that maybe we could move to Thursday night instead of Tuesday night, and so first I called our attorney to see if that was even possible. And he felt that he could change to Thursday night. So that is now open for discussion. I feel like since Jared's here on Monday, we get a lot of work done on Monday, and we can encourage people to get their reports in. Dwayne's here on Monday, almost everybody's here on Monday, and we just get a lot done on Monday. And I think that by Monday night, we could have those things in hand and get it posted to have a meeting on Thursday night.
So we'll remove our city council from Tuesday to Thursday?
That's what I'm asking, yes.
How about Wednesday? So you're saying you need more time once you get the reports to formulate the agenda, that you don't have enough time?
Well, we don't, we have to have all of the reports and everything in the packet when we're posting that we're gonna have a meeting in seventy-two hours, so that we can send the entire packet to, to all of the city council members, so that you have time to read what's in these reports. And some of them are very lengthy, when you get the accountant's reports, and you need to go through all those figures and everything, it takes a little bit of time. Or if, say, they're doing replating, or, or something that's gonna take a lot more time, we have to have all those papers ready to go on the website and to go into the packets so that the public and the city council can read those things.
So you'd have to have the agenda finalized by six-thirty on Monday?
Yes.
And that's what you wanna do instead of Friday, say, because you've been doing it on, say, sometimes if you don't get it done on Thursday, then you sometimes get it done on Friday, and I know there's been some questions and conversations about that, that it wasn't posted, say, in the marquee soon enough for people to see it before the city council meeting, or if the agenda was posted on a Friday, then people didn't realize that they should have read it in the marquee over the weekend, and then they complained to us about that, perhaps.
And we've been posting at the post office also. So we're posting it out here, the website, and at the post office. So it's being posted in three places.
It goes on the website right away?
Yes.
Do, do the agenda?
It has to by law.
So?
So we would like, I would like to move it to Thursday, if that would work for the city council.
What, what Thursday? The first and third, the first?
The first and third.
Okay, so it's, so the motion would be to set a new regular meeting schedule of every first and third Thursday at six-thirty P.M. here.
So the, the first would be the city council, and the third planning and zoning?
They're both city council meetings, we, it's typically with leverage that third week, the new planning and zoning, because you don't have all of the reports, the standard reports. So there's a metric.
I'm cool with Thursday, I just wanna start a little bit earlier.
You can change the time as well. Six, six, if I need to leave earlier to get here, that's fine, we can do.
I'll say six.
Six or five-thirty or what?
Is there a conflict for you?
Six seems better, I mean, five-thirty puts people in conflict.
If that's the city council's desire, I can make that. It is. It's difficult, because right now, my wife and I are on one vehicle, two commutes on a, on thirty-five, plus a child, take care of daycare, all within about an hour's time, is a well-choreographed event. Having that extra buffer is nice.
Get your nest board.
Yeah. If you keep it six-thirty, I, I would personally appreciate it.
I think we should still stick to six, to six-thirty, based on what you're saying with your wife, and only having one vehicle and having to drive on I-35 during the most critical time of that afternoon.
Where you coming from right now? I'll be a little closer.
Or no force.
Do you rent or own?
Anyway, we should, we should just keep it at six-thirty then. So the plan zoning will be also on Thursday.
I mean, as, as a regular scheduled, feel a leverage that Thursday would make sense as you're planning a zoning commission. If you wanted to establish your own schedule, say, Mondays, and in addition to regular council meeting schedules, I mean, you can, that, that body can make that choice at that time, whatever you wanted to do. But typically, when we leverage that third week to do planning zoning business, just because that's kind of rhythm we've gotten in for last.
If, if you, if you want, you, you just need to have at least one regular meeting a month. If you want to, to set two regular meetings, you can. The, the upside to having two regular meetings, if, if this, if this body votes to have two regular meetings a month, you're, you're committing to it, unless you doubtfully act to cancel one of those meetings, you can always schedule one regular meeting a month, and then call special meetings as needed.
I would like to do that.
How about this? If we're following, a lot of times, we have the plan zoning with the city council meeting. Can we make it like at six, because it's gonna be a little longer, or is that, that you?
Again, I, I, I will make arrangements I need to make.
I mean, I mean.
I don't wanna do this sole purpose.
I mean, we'll definitely keep a regular city council meeting at six-thirty, but if we have a planned zoning meeting, or could we do it as needed, if we have a big schedule, is could we just say, hey, can we make it six o'clock this time, since we've got a busy schedule, and then go back to six-thirty?
That, so that's special. That, that's why it needs to be special, because what you need to do under the law is establish a regular meeting schedule of at least one meeting a month, so the public has notice of when and how often.
But if we have a regular schedule, say it's every Thursday, but occasionally we change it from six to six-thirty, is that a problem?
Once you set the regular meeting schedule, you must abide by it, which is why most cities, small cities, only have one regular meeting a month. And, and in this case, it's historically been the first Tuesday of every month for this city, and then special meetings called as needed. You, you, you can do the first Thursday of every month, the first and third, the first, second, third, third, fourth. You pick how many meetings you wanna have a month, but just understand, then you've gotta stick to that schedule, unless you act to cancel those meetings.
For the regular meetings.
Yes.
So we need to have one regular meeting on the first Thursday of every month, and then we can have a special meeting with the time difference.
As needed. Then, then you, you could, you could call a special meeting for eight A.M. on Sunday morning if you wanted to. Then, then you have very broad discretion when to call that.
But I think that's a good way to go, just in case, I mean, we'll probably keep it at six-thirty, but if we do need to go longer, we have the option.
The P and Z meetings usually have been on the weeks that we don't have the regular meetings.
Sometimes we have three meetings a month.
Oh, we've had a lot.
There's been many months where we've had more than two, two meetings.
You guys are gonna fire the mayor, aren't you?
Well, I, I think the thing about Thursday that's better is that now that we're open on Friday, that if you need to start resolving things after the meeting on Thursday, you still have it sort of fresh in your mind on Friday, as opposed to having to normally have, had to wait for those three days, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, until Monday. So I think now that we do have the office open on Friday, that for me, Thursday would work, and I think we should still keep it based on Jared's concerns to have it at six-thirty.
Yeah, so the one meeting a month and then advise from there?
Well, I think even as we're going into more concerns about development and planning and zoning, that we will probably normally have a planning and zoning. that we will probably normally have a planning and zoning meeting once a month. I, I would gather.
But by law, we just have to say we're gonna have one regular meeting.
We just want to.
And we can have.
In that, in that month, that one meeting that month, you would have to, if you wanna have more, put it on the agenda or the mayor would call it. Yeah. The mayor can call a special meeting whenever she wants to.
But you don't have to come.
And then, and then as special meetings, be mindful that you've gotta have four council members present.
That's been the difficulty.
Yeah. Where, whereas to, tonight, if, if this, if this were a special meeting and one of the four of you had not shown up, we would all go home, couldn't, couldn't have the meeting.
Do we wanna take an a, action on this though now without speaking to our other city council person?
We can, there's a resolution that we talked about presenting, we could roll this in as part of the resolution.
We, we need a resolution for this anyway. With or without action? We, we, the regular meeting schedule is set by resolution. So we'll need a resolution.
I, I think mainly I wanted to find out if people were willing to change.
I mean, and like for me, I'm cool with their, I'm good with Thursday, but it's like we have so many agenda items that have been on the agenda for the longest time. Like you would think like we would have, like, our three meetings, like, planned already in advance. Like we would just already have them like planned. I don't see why meetings have to be planned from week to week when we have so much stuff to do.
Really trying to get ahead of that. A couple of things have, have tripped us off over the last month. Yeah, we've had on two occasions are planning and zoning public hearing meetings. Haven't done twice because either the newspaper didn't go right or the mailings didn't go right. And so that bumps on the agenda around. Um, and then we've had some difficulties with, you know, the I P issue we discussed earlier. That's, that's taken some of the time. Some walk-in things. So, yeah, you're, you're right. There's, there's a, there's a huge backlog.
I, I don't see like how changing the day is gonna like automatically, you know, clear, clear up our backlog that we have.
One of the things that it would do is on a, I'll use my report as an example. On the city man, man, minister's report, I wanna provide the, the latest, most up-to-date information. So what happens, say on a Monday when I'm in the office, things may change during the week. And by the time Thursday, Friday come around to finalize the agenda, priorities might have shifted on what needs to be set on the agenda. And maybe things I've expected to report on or include on the agenda didn't get a chance to do vice versa. By doing, and then you're almost in a situation where I'm planning for meeting Monday and that meeting's not happening for another nine days. And that, that can create some issues. So by shortening that time between preparation to meeting from like nine days down to four days would help provide more relevant information and helps make sure that what the priority is gets addressed with.
So is it, so is it because of reporting?
Reporting is, is a, is a big issue.
So you wanna do.
The other thing that's happening is, um, like on a Thursday or Friday, the mayor, Adrian will give me a call or we'll have a conversation that can even on, hey, what's, what do we need to do about this agenda? And by the time the agenda itself gets settled, then doing the coordination to pull it all back together with the read aheads on Thursday, Friday afternoon is, is what's really killing them.
Okay, so then like, can, may I make a suggestion? I would like to suggest that we do the reports on the third Thursday, that we keep our first Thursdays for ordinance, um, issues, uh, agenda items, upcoming agenda items that we need to, because I feel like although one meeting is a good idea, the thought of having longer meetings, um, you know, that's also, that also could happen, just having one meeting. So I'm just gonna say, let's just keep two meetings, do the reports on the second Thursday.
We can definitely do that.
Or divide.
Our input on that, on their reports, we talked about doing a resolution to making all reports part of a consent agenda where they're not verbally briefed to council. So like the police reported we had tonight, my minister's report, it'd be in your packet. And there'd be a gen, a consent item to accept all reports. And under that, you know, motion to accept and discussion, there's questions on a, on something to report, then it would be briefed out. You wouldn't have like tonight, the, the amount of discussion we had about parking in the parks on a police blotter report.
Yeah.
So, um, it's some of those ways, taking that action, I think will help a lot. I mean, I'm sure that would kill an hour at least tonight, right? So it's, we can still push them off to the third, but the third meeting isn't planned, then the reports.
Sure.
Get a mic, blow it out, see, might not get.
I think we have a good idea of where we need to go.
Yeah.
I think we all kind of have the same ideas, just need to refine it a little bit, so.
So we, we fair resolution for the first and third Thursday.
But if you do the majority of your work on Monday, you would still have to have the agenda in place by the end of the day on Monday in order to get it posted by Thursday.
Yes.
And so then any other fact-finding that you've come up with, I mean, do you do the majority of work after Monday or?
No, it would be posted on Monday.
Most, most of the work that I get done is oftentimes on the, like a Sunday night or something like that. And I kinda work on, on Monday. I might get some time during the week, but it's a little difficult with other commitments. So most of the time I'm, I'm working evenings, it's during the weekend and then Mondays. So by the weekend, by the time a weekend comes around, the agenda's already set and I'm already behind.
Mondays are a whirlwind.
So we would not formulate and set the agenda on Monday by six-thirty?
No, we would.
We would. And that way Jared's here, everybody's here. And if we have questions, everybody's here. Whereas on Thursday and Friday, when we're trying to get people to respond to us, they're all gone.
Building official, the treasurer.
Sony and Mr. So. Everybody's here on Monday. And you can ask questions because we're all here.
Ask questions personally, not based on, on the agenda, well, to formulate the agenda.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I need to make a motion then.
We need to make a motion to adjourn, right? Cause we have to write the resol, the resolution.
Yeah.
And we'll bring that to the next meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, it's, it'll be here at the, was it June? Point first, yeah.
Well, I mean, can I just say briefly about future agenda items? We really need to start to talk about parks and signage and all that. I, I, I keep mentioning this a lot and I really, based on the traffic and the mismanagement of phase one that I really think we need to, and Al and Bates too, we really need to start talking about the signage in the parks, in the parks. I want the park to be on the agenda as soon as possible.
I agree. Can I make a suggestion? That we have a park as a workshop, discuss all those issues you're talking about and then we can.
Yeah, we have, well, there's a, a park advisory board.
Uh huh. We have a park advisory, you know, I can attend or whoever wants to attend and we can put, put all our bullet points.
And have a police.
And a police there and they come up with a document or something, a rough draft.
Cause I agree with you.
And then just come in, talk to the advisory board, get what needs to be done and then come in and present it to the council and then we approve or not, but yeah, definitely utilize your board members.
And then, and then we could all, if we want, you can attend and get the police chief to attend, we all do a brainstorm and then put across can, then the doctor's having a document, then we approve it or whatever.
Well, who's gonna speak to the chairman of the committee then to, to say, we need to come up with a meeting as soon as possible?
You. You're hired.
I nominate Sam.
So you were the ex-chairman, so like that, that final. We can combine.
I'll try to get me shit through.
We could buy.
I'll with build parking along with the park, park issues. I mean, they get one workshop. Is the parking, it's kind of related to the parks or do we wanna break it separately? That could be discussed in workshop.
I don't know how soon because, um, the building in Miss, and what official has been tasked with looking at those ordinances. Uh, he works pretty fast, but he only works two days a week.
I mean, on the more ordinances pertaining to the park?
The old ones from nineteen eighty.
Maybe, maybe, maybe we need to get him, maybe we have a workshop when he's here. Is that possible? Bring people in and then brainstorm. Maybe get everybody together and then brainstorm.
I hate to take up a lot of his time during the only days that he's here on.
But on day Tuesday.
Yeah, but it's important.
But I think we need to have a workshop. There's a lot of issues we need to resolve. So do you handle it?
Yeah, so we wanna try and have a parks advisory committee meeting workshop on a Monday or a Tuesday when Lee is here.
What do you think?
But it would have to be in the evening.
Call me here too. Call me here on Monday.
Just plan the date, send out an email, whoever could be here could be here and whoever can't, can't. Have it in the morning, have a breakfast, everybody's here, they're getting paid at that time. We don't wanna impose on anybody at the nighttime. I'm gonna be off for a month. I'd love to come, just invite me.
Okay, but we need to have players, we need to have, we need to have our police.
Check.
He's busy during the day.
Or we have a new officer that's gonna be here during the day.
And we'll coordinate what the required attendance, attendance needs to be. If we can't get those attendance, then agenda items, this push till we can get that coordinated.
Well, the only thing we really need is three members of the parks advisory committee, really.
And we need the chief. No, we need the chief, we need Lee. I think those two need to be there. You want me there, I'll put my two cents worth there.
That's more like a quarter.
Quarter at least.
Ten dollars worth. Okay, I make a motion to adjourn at nine oh five, nine oh seven. Okay, thank you.